Town Council meeting for October 21st at 7:05 PM. All council members are present and should be all checked in. Boys, it's your turn, come on down. You get to lead us in the most important part of the night, which is the pledge of allegiance. Audience, if you would, please. Alright, boys, here's how it's gonna work. You see the flag behind me, right? It's pretty straightforward. We're gonna all turn around and face it. Everyone around behind you is facing it. It's gonna go super quiet, and then as soon as you guys start the pledge, everyone's gonna jump in, okay? Alright, floor's yours. You can start, guys.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fantastic job, guys. Way to go.
Thank you.
Alright. I know, they look super, super sharp tonight. Alright, next item up on our agenda is public comment. We have two people who have signed up for public comment tonight. Public comment is an opportunity, this is general public comment, so it's not on any item that's on specifically for the agenda. General public comment for items not on the agenda, we have a sign-in sheet, and if there's anyone here who didn't get a chance to sign up, who wants to come on, we still have some time, because our initial period of time is 30 minutes, and then anyone who's left, we do at the end of the meeting, but since we only have two on the sheet, I think we should be fine with time. These are for items that are not on our regular agenda. If you're here for an item that is on our regular agenda, there'll be time for public comment during each of those items, and for you to be able to come up then. There's a clock above me that says three, I got one on the back wall as well. Three-minute time limit, no action will be taken. I'll start the clock after, once you start going, when it gets to the end, I will thank you, even if you're mid-sentence, I don't wanna be rude, but I wanna let the next person up, so even if you're mid-sentence, I'll thank you and invite the next guest up. So, with that, we'll open up public comment at 7:08 PM. First one is town resident Terry Dodd. And since we already have your address, you can just get rolling.
Terry Dodd, 11450 Marlborough Drive. I wanna talk about consent agenda item H. I think you need to be aware that the Douglas County GOP Executive Committee debated this topic in, at the September meeting, and George Allen, our Parker's own George Allen, presented a resolution against 1A. It is in fact a new tax. It is a false statement that they put out there, that it is not a new tax. The tax that was in place, or is in place, for the Justice Center was set to sundown in 2020, and by instituting 1A, it will represent new taxes going forward. The Executive Committee of the GOP voted for the resolution against 1A, so you need to be aware that, that a lot of people in Douglas County and in Parker are against this new tax. So be aware of that. I would suggest that you take it off your consent agenda as a supporting resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we've got Ray Trappis. Come on down.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for having me talk tonight. I live at a-
Did you start to say something, Jim? I could've swore, I just, did you, was I the only one who just heard Jim talking?
Yep.
Alright, what, what did you guys put in my lemonade here? Cause I swear, Ray, right before you started talking, I thought I heard Jim go, uh, uh. No? Okay, sorry, Ray? It was telepathic. Ray, you're good, go ahead, buddy.
Mr. Mayor, Council, again, thank you for having me talk tonight. I live at 10680 Stonemeter Drive, it's in unincorporated Douglas County, but I'm here to talk about the Newland Gulch development, which is just south of my property. It's gonna come to you from the Planning Commission next, next meeting on November 4th. There will be a very detrimental effect to the five properties just north of this project. We're not here to stop the development, but the project will cause substantial harm to these current property owners, most of whom work from home, either full-time or part-time. The noise, truck exhaust fumes, and the clouds of dirt during the extended construction period will be significant. We have experienced this when they put 200,000 cubic yards of dirt on their property when Chambers Road was cut through. We experienced it today with the ongoing build-out of Sierra Ridge and the beautiful new storage facility at Chambers and Main Street. We hear all the noise. It'll happen again with this project. The permanent commercial additions will have its share of gasoline fumes and fast food, fast food smells drifting onto our property. You'll state the developer and the owner have property rights, that they should be free to exercise. So did the owner of the recycling center in Douglas County, which Town Council so efficiently blocked due to the adverse effects, or potential adverse effects, to current Parker residents. Council has stated that development costs money, thus the excise tax that's on the ballot for November. We're requesting a similar tax, or a lien, or something on the developer for this site, to pay for the cost of damages, the noise, the exhaust fumes, the dirt, and also the permanent change of the view and the environment that they will create. We want Town Council to require the developer to bargain in good faith with these five properties. Project approval does not occur until we sign off on this agreement. We will then recommend approval of the proposal requested from the Planning Commission. They will say this has never been done before, but neither was the Progressive Hotel on the west side of Parker. Neither has the Resistance of Pine Lane Curve. There was a ballot initiative last November for property rights. This kinda thing is coming. People are sick of developers adversely affecting the rights of current property owners. We want Parker Town Council to take the lead in protecting property rights of homeowners adversely affected by new development. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ray. Appreciate it. Okay, so those are the only two we had sign up at advance, just as a quick call, is there anyone else for public comment? Okay, then we'll go ahead and close public comment at 7:12 PM, move on to the next, which is reports, items, comments from Mayor and Council. How about we start with Mr. Rivero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, obviously, fall break for most of us. Didn't have much, I had Cherry Creek Basin Water Quality Authority. We're in the process of hiring our first employee, and hopefully that'll go well, and got a lot coming on the plate with that, that organization, so looking to keep some historical knowledge over there, and other than that, enjoyed my fall break.
Cheryl?
Don't have anything.
Jeff?
Nothing for me.
Renee?
Performance reviews, budgets, that's been, been about it.
Debbie?
No specific meetings.
John?
Wow, I'm like the only one in town, I guess.
I know, yeah.
I attended the E470 Budget Workshop on the 10th. I did Mayor Pro Tem duties. Mayor Wade was out on the 12th for a Girl Scout Gold Award, it's a story walk at McCabe Meadows. It's a Parker Road and Indian Pipe, is that correct? Okay, for Avery Hendrick, fantastic job Avery has done. Douglas County Land Conservancy, I did a Harvey Open Space hike with our, our Douglas County Open Space rep, Brian O'Malley. Let's see here, I, on Monday, the 14th, I attended a lunch to honor outgoing Mayor Rakowski of Greenwood Village. Amazing turnout, about 250 people. Senator Gardner was there, as well as different, different consulates. Mayor Rakowski was a very well, well-traveled person, he was in the military, so it was fantastic to see everybody come out and truly honor what he has done for, for our region. Also attended the Dr. Cog Regional Transportation Committee. That's basically a board of RTD employees and elected people, as well as CDOT people, Dr. Cog people, and we went through the Dr. Cog Board Meeting Agenda, and we just wanted to make sure that our fellow, fellow people at RTD and CDOT know what we're doing and concur with that. So, with that, that's it.
Alright, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine, will be enacted with one motion and one vote. There'll be no separate discussion items on ordinances, will not be pulled unless, there'll be no separate discussion items on items unless they are pulled by majority vote by the council, and ordinances will not be pulled as they are on first reading. So, Council, we have consent agenda items 4A through 4I in front of you right now.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by John, and a second by Renee. Council, in just a sec, your vote box will pop up, and you will have your chance. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is item five, which is our Town Administrator's Report. You guys are here in a unique situation tonight, because our Town Administrator's out of town at a conference, and our deputy Town Administrator is also out of town at a conference. So they did like arm wrestling in the back to see who would be representing, and holy cow, Danette, you're like sitting in the hot seat right there, you drew the short straw today.
I did.
But the good luck for all of you is that if you go online to the town's website, our quarterly Town Administrator's Reports are available online. Wealth of information, numbers, charts, what's going on, what's coming on, all sorts of cool stuff. Josh, hold that up, he can be Vanna White there, so you can see it. It's a cool little report, so if you're ever curious, that's the place to go. Next item up is-
East and west of Lance Leaf Street were added. Improvements to the entry park and tot lot were added. Increased size and improved amenities in the fitness park and Park Hill. Increased size and landscape treatments in the fitness node and Greenway Park, as well as improvements to the adventure play area. Given these, these changes, staff is recommending approval of the proposed and revised sketch and preliminary plans, subject to the following three conditions. Those three conditions are detailed in your council action form for this evening. Generally speaking, the first condition is that all final plats and landscape plans be substantially similar to the preliminary plan drawings, as determined by staff. That the applicant meet the setback stagger and zoning requirements in the Cottonwood Highlands Plan Development and the land development ordinance, including the residential buffer standards. And then the third one is that the applicant shall submit a revised sketch and preliminary plans, and a preliminary landscape plan incorporating the revisions outlined in the council action form, and any other revisions outlined within the council action form, and any other revisions the applicant and the council agree to during the continued hearing for administrative review and approval by the planning director within 90 days of this hearing, and in no event shall the applicant satisfy the conditions of approval later than the application for the first final plat. That would conclude the staff presentation, however, as mentioned, the applicant is here to give a presentation as well. But certainly, if there's any questions for staff, we can, we can answer those.
Council, any questions for staff before we have the applicant come down?
Not at this time.
No? Alright, come on down. Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. John Chaney, Lennar, Colorado, 9193 South Jamaica Street, Englewood, Colorado, 80112. As was presented by Paul, we, as, as, after our last presentation, went back and looked hard at our plan as a result of the, some of the comments that we received from council, and worked with staff to try to take a closer look at adding amenities and trails and trying to improve the plan, and so we're here to present the details of that plan, and Ken Puntzarelli with LAI is our planner, and he's here to present the details.
Wonderful. And it was Ken, correct?
Yes.
Welcome, Ken.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members of the town of Parker. My name is Ken Puntzarelli. I haven't been before this elected body for a while, however, our firm has enjoyed a wonderful relationship with the town of Parker. We worked on Bradbury Ranch, we worked on the Lutheran High School, the Rockies, and the Newland Gulch neighborhood across the street to the east, as well as a number of daycare and multifamily projects throughout the years, as well as some projects that are probably in either adjoining the, the town, or certainly in the mailing address, such as Meridian Village, as well as, now I'm forgetting, it's development by Richmond down the road, so anyway, we've, we've done a lot of work in the town, and all of our projects have been very successful, they've been embraced by the town, and so I apologize I wasn't here the last hearing, but I had a different engagement. So, this evening, I'm here to present some of the improvements to the plan, based on working with staff and those, those type of improvements, so where is the clicker?
You just, you just make a clicking noise and Paul will-
Okay, so, so effectively, the improvements that have been identified on, on staff's presentation, this is the prior, the prior plan, there have been improvements to a number of these different Greenway nodes throughout the, throughout the development, as well as park improvements, as John had mentioned as well. Next slide, please. Okay, so, this slide is really for the purposes of kinda reacquainting everybody with the overall development of the amount of park area required versus what has actually been provided. So, in, in totality, there's about, about 15 acres of parkland between some of the earlier filings and the current one, versus requirement of just over 10, 10 acres on the left-hand, on the left-hand side. So, effectively, we're just shy of, of about five acres of additional parkland in the overall development. Next slide, please. So, the conditions of approval that are actually in the staff report are these conditions that are on the screen, that we've worked diligently with staff over the last 30 days regarding the different trail connections for improving connectivity, improving some of the play amenities, such as the adventure park, as well as removing some lots to expand some of those green space and park amenity improvements. Next slide. So this is the improved plan, so some of the, some of the things, if I, if I had a cursor, I could point to, but staff had already identified in the Greenway Park, where we have benches, increased landscaping, we've reduced some of the lot size, as well as expanded the fitness node by Parker House Road. Then across the street there, we've effectively created an adventure playground for children with different play apparatus, as well as some wildlife elements that are included in there. And then up at the north, up on Lance Leaf Street, there's a fitness park, where we've taken out two residential lots there, we've created a, a play hill and expanded some of the play apparatus in that area, and then the entry park up to the very north, we have improved that park with landscape amenities. Then to the west, there is, by the detention pond going south, there is a trail linkage, so that improves connectivity from the neighborhood all the way up to Cottonwood Drive, and then if we go to the east, along our eastern edge of the site, we have a trail connecting to the north, north and south from Parker House Road. Next slide, please. So, this, this map effectively helps to illustrate all of the different park and, park improvements that were cited on the slide that had the chart with the park dedication. So, you can see for development of this size, we've, we've done a very nice job of, of increasing a concentration of those park areas, and then you'll look at this proposed, this proposed development, and you'll see actually quite a bit more green space within the concentrated area. Next slide, please. So, this was the previous area for perennial, perennial garden with bench and shade structure, so the, the next slide will show what the update is to that, and so you'll see there, we've integrated a number of playground elements, some bears, some rock climbing elements, and improved landscape features in, in this park area. So it should be quite a fun little park for kids. Next slide. So this is the previous entry park that comes in off of Cottonwood Drive. Next slide shows the trail that is to the west, can you slide your cursor to the trail to the west by the detention pond? You can see that trail that comes all the way around, it swings north, and then you'll see the improvements to landscape and apparatus within the playground itself, and then you can kinda see the utility easements that bifurcate that area, they're underground, but we still have to live within the envelope that they create, but nonetheless, you don't see any of that, you just see the physical improvements to the, to the property when you come into the neighborhood. Next slide, please. So this is the previous track J. You'll notice on the left-hand side of the screen, there was no trail, and then on the right-hand side, there, there actually is a trail connection, again, improving connectivity all the way up to Cottonwood Drive. Okay, so this is the other fitness node area that we've expanded upon, and those two lots that you see right at the top of the screen have been removed. Next slide, and then you'll see that a play hill has been proposed with artificial turf, and we've expanded the fitness node with benches, bike racks, and additional landscape plantings in the area. So instead of 238 lots, there are now 236. The Greenway, you'll see top and bottom, you'll notice the, the Greenway Park area, there should be a label there, but it's not mentioned, but there are benches on the bottom of the screen at the Greenway Park, and there are rear lot adjustments, and there is additional landscaping in that area, and then on the right-hand side of the screen where the fitness node is, you'll notice the difference between top and bottom, there's been adjustments to the rear lots, and then the fitness node expanded, and the next slide will illustrate that for you. So that's the before, and then this is the after. Next slide. And then, one of the last slides here is an exhibit of a typical lot and on-street parking. We have about 215, I believe, on-street parking stalls, and 481 parking spaces either in driveway or in garage, so hopefully the next time that the Broncos win a Super Bowl, we'll have a fantastic Super Bowl party in this neighborhood, because we'll have plenty of parking.
Don't hold your breath, alright?
Yeah, well, I'm, we're, we're hopeful, right? So, I mean, you can see that this'll be architecture that'll be fully compatible with the surrounding development, and, and it'll be a nice development, and you can see the, the emergency vehicle connection on the longer, longer part of the alley, all the way at the end, so that we don't have this long abyss of hardscape, we wanted to glam up, if you will, the alley with landscape, and, and make it a more intimate courtyard setting, which is how these homes are, are designed to, to be, and so this, this rendering is actually an accurate 3D rendering of the physical conditions of that space, of what you will see. So, that effectively concludes our presentation, I look forward to any questions or commentary, but we think we've come a long way with improvements based on staff and, and council comment, and we hope that you'll look favorably upon our proposal.
Thank you very much, Ken.
Thank you.
Council, do you have any questions? Cheryl?
Well, not questions, comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you greatly improved the value of your project, and the livability within the project. I like the additional trails, you've expanded your parks, you've just made it a much better project.
Well, thank you very much, Council.
The other question I do have, cause we asked it at one of our last meetings, was what is the distance from your sidewalk along Cottonwood Drive from the curb? So it's the sidewalk to the curb, whatever you allowed for.
It's about, it's about-
I know there's some standards there, but we had a concern about that maybe not quite being enough.
Yeah, that's a, I believe that to be an eight-foot tree lawn, if that's what you're asking about.
Okay.
Yeah. So that would be consistent with what is along the, the rest of Cottonwood Drive, either to the west of us or to the north of us, as developed in the current condition.
Yeah, we thought about maybe moving that sidewalk even further back a little bit, just for safety concerns, but-
You know-
I didn't hear back on what happened on that.
Yeah, you know, that, that's an interesting point. After the tragedy that actually occurred here in Parker in the retail development a couple of years ago, nine news came to my office to actually interview us about what we thought about, you know, cars, development, safety, and one of the things that, that I mentioned about residential neighborhoods is that street trees act very much like a bollard, like you would see in your main street, that are lit up at night, and those actually provide kind of a, a safety element. The other thing that you have going for you is the speed of the road along Cottonwood, and the fact that it's a vertical curve, so if a car hits that, there's a warning, it's not a roll curb, and then the secondary mechanism is the, is the street tree, and the fact that they're not coming straight at it, it would be grazing, grazing a curb, so for those reasons, we feel like that's a, a pretty safe street cross-section that, that you already have in place.
Well, thank you for taking a look at this again.
Sure, absolutely.
Josh?
Ken, thank you very much. John, thank you, thank you very, very much. I appreciate it. You did an excellent job. I agree with Councilwoman Pogue. You guys went and took it and beautified it, and I believe added value, and turned it into an incredible community that I think will, will answer both empty nesters at the same time of, as equity builders, and I believe this is a great, a great thing, and as I said before, a month ago, this is a much-needed piece, and I truly, truly appreciate you guys' vision, Lennar's vision on this, on this product here in Parker, and thank you for making it up to our standards, very much so.
Thank you very much, Councilmember.
Other questions?
I really like the bears.
The bears?
Thank you, they're fun.
Cool, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and open it up for public comment at 7:35 PM, if there's anyone here wishing to address council on this item.
So just because I had a case of some timers, cause I'm not quite to the Alzheimer's stage, it's Cobblestone Ranch at the south bookend of the town.
Oh, yes, alright.
It's in Castle Rock, but it's still a nice development.
We don't use the C-word in Parker, but that's okay.
I understand, noted.
Alright, so seeing no movement for public comment, we'll go ahead and close public comment at 7:35, and I want to entertain further discussion or a motion on item 6A.
I move to approve the Cottonwood Highlands filing number seven, sketch and preliminary plans, based upon staff findings, with the conditions contained in the staff report.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Josh, and a second from Cheryl. Council, in just a sec, your vote box will pop up.
I believe so, we need to make comment that we add in specific roadways to this.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item up on our agenda is item 6B. This is Canvas filing number one, minor development plat and subdivision agreement. Paul, you gonna have Stacy come in and do this one for you, or you gonna?
Do you want me to?
Alright. Paul, one moment. You got me. Cheryl, am I turning your microphone off if you're, that we, you're getting picked up on the microphone, so, Paul, go ahead, please.
Great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor again, and members of Town Council. As was just referenced, the next public hearing before you is project number SUB18-010. It is for Canvas filing number one, minor development plat and subdivision improvement agreement. Subject property of this request is located at the northeast corner of Parker Road and Ponderosa Drive. The subject property was annexed by the town and zoned with a C commercial designation in March of 2006. The subject property totals about 5.4 acres in size, and the applicant has submitted this minor development plat in order to create four lots for commercial development and two tracks to accommodate drainage. Just as a refresher again, the minor development plat is a type of subdivision application. During this application, things for, things that are reviewed are things like lot sizes and lot layout, and we ensure that they- layout, and we ensure that they meet town standards. We also review shared improvements for development and make sure that those meet town standards. And oftentimes, those improvements, which is the case with the application this evening, require the security of those improvements through a subdivision improvement agreement, or called an SIA. Council's action tonight is based on six approval criteria found in the land development ordinance. Those criteria will be mentioned here in just a moment. As part of this application, individual site development is not evaluated with a minor development plat. If approved, site-specific improvements are evaluated at the time of the site plan submittal. Within the town's master plan, the subject property is called out within the central commercial designation. This designation is the commercial core of the town. It focuses on core retail, services, offices, lodging, restaurants, and entertainment. The creation of commercial lots is consistent with this master plan designation. And this slide shows the four lots and two tracks that would be created with the approval of the minor development plat. Again, four lots for commercial development. Those four lots are shown with the red lines. The two green boxes indicate the two tracks that would be created for drainage. And the yellow star indicates where the full movement access for the site would be located. There would be no access onto Parker Road as a part of this development. As alluded to earlier, there are six approval criteria for a minor development plat. Staff will not go through each of these. However, staff in concert with our referral partners did review the application against these six criteria and determined that the application met all six. Terms of referral agency responses, all referral agencies responded with either advisory comments or no comments related to this request. And on September 26th of this year, Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend that Town Council approve the request for the Canvas filing number one, minor development plat at the northeast corner of Parker Road and Ponderosa Drive. And additionally, staff is recommending that Town Council approve the request for the Canvas filing number one subdivision improvement agreement. That would conclude staff's presentation. However, staff is available for any questions you have. The applicant is also available for any questions you may have.
Any questions for Paul, Counsel?
Just real quick, you said full movement, so four ways lit? Or just?
Just four-way turning movements, not a...
Okay. Other questions? No? Okay, the applicant's here. Come on. Do you have anything else to add? Are you good to go? Okay, cool. We'll go ahead and open it up for public comment at 7:40 PM. If there's anyone here wishing to address counsel on item 6B. Scouts, any questions? No? All right.
The look of terror in their faces.
I know, whatever I do, the look of terror. Ah, gotta come up with something fast. All right, we'll close public comment at 7:40 PM. And I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve, based on staff findings, the Canvas filing number one, minor development plat.
Second.
We have a motion from Debbie and a second from Renee. Counsel, in just a sec, your thing will pop up. And then for item number two, the subdivision agreement, I would need a motion.
I move to approve, based on staff findings, the Canvas filing number one, subdivision improvement agreement.
Second.
Motion by Debbie and a second by Renee. In just a sec, you'll get your voting box again. Next item up is item seven, and these are our ordinances. 7A is for the Moore property. There are two pieces to this. We're going to have one presentation, but there's two separate items before you guys. Item A1 is for ordinance number 1.538 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance conveying the Moore property water rights to the Parker Water and Sanitation District by special warranty deed. And item A2 is resolution number 19-086, which is a resolution to approve the filing of a petition for inclusion of land and the submission of non-tributary groundwater consent land ownership statements to the Parker Water and Sanitation District petition for the Moore property. Mr. Dennis Trapp.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. The Moore property, just so that you all are aware, it is a three-acre property located just north of Town Hall on the other side of Main Street. And as you stated, what is before you this evening is the inclusion process of getting this property included in the Parker Water and Sanitation District. And this is pretty typical. When the town acquires a piece of property, we go through that inclusionary process. Probably the most recent one we did was a couple of years ago for the Harvey property. So this is very similar to that. And the inclusionary process, there is a cost to that. It's basically $5,000 an acre. So for the three-acre property, the inclusionary process is $15,000 and some administrative cost. What we get back, the district will go through, they will look at the aquifers that are below the property. They will determine acre feet of water that they can withdraw per year. And they will, based upon us transferring those non-tributary groundwater rights to the district, they will give us water credits back. And that's a calculation that the district does. For this particular property, we will get, once the inclusion process is done, we will get six water credits back that goes into our existing inventory. And we use those water credits because they partially offset when we apply for a tap, depending on the size of that tap, we can use these water credits to reduce that fee. And we have a number of water credits in our reserve at this point, so this will just be added to that reserve, that list spreadsheet, if you will. This is tentatively scheduled to go to the district. I'm assuming there's two readings, it's two meetings, on October 24th, which is this Thursday, and then November 14th. And then, once that's approved, we get those water credits added to our inventory, and we use them appropriately in the future for taps, for landscaping, parks, or even facilities that we build where we have to get a tap fee. So that's it. I'll turn it back over to Counsel for any discussion and comments.
Wonderful, thanks, Dennis. Counsel, do you have any questions for Dennis? Water credits, tap fees, any of that fun stuff? No? All right. Since this is a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:45 PM. If there's anyone here wishing to address counsel. Seeing, whenever I say that, everyone freezes, no matter what they're doing, because they don't want me to think they're moving. So it's like, all of a sudden, stop, yeah. Mike Smith moved. Mike Smith, come on up. No, all right. We're going to go and close public comment at 7:45 PM. And I would entertain further discussion or two separate motions, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.538 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Debbie. Counsel, please vote when that box pops up. Item number two?
I move to approve resolution number 19-086.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Debbie. Counsel, please vote. Next item up is item 7B. This is ordinance number 5.77.1 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend section 10.13.080 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning the kiosk program. Bryce, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Section 10.13.080 of the code allows the town to administer a kiosk program for home builders to advertise new residential developments on kiosk sign located in Town Rightofway. Starting in 2006 and ending in 2017, the town operated a builder kiosk program in which the town built signs and rented spaces to builders. In the end, this program was terminated because it was costly and used a lot of staff time. Current home builder advertising has evolved. Now, the town has the option for home builder kiosk services to be provided by a third party without cost and staff time required to run our own program. The proposed ordinance adds the ability for the town to hire a third party to provide home builder sign within the town owned right-ofway. If this is proposed, if this proposed ordinance is approved, the town may choose to release an RFP to seek a private partner to provide these services. On October 10th, 2019, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended Town Council approve ordinance 5.77.1 to amend section 10.13.080 of the Parker Municipal Code regarding the kiosk program. Staff also recommends approval. As always, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Bryce. Counsel, questions from the kiosk program?
So Bryce, why would a town get into business with home builders? What are we doing by offering a kiosk program?
So the kiosk program has a couple of benefits. One is it reduces sign clutter, all those little signs that you see in the right-ofway that blow around in storms and create problems. This provides them another opportunity for wayfinding to their sites. Also, it provides as a wayfinding tool for those that are visiting our town, potentially looking for houses, so they're not looking around fumbling with their GPS. They actually can follow the signs. And the third kind of relates to the first, but it consolidates all the information onto one aesthetically pleasing sign.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions?
And the builders still rent their space?
Yes, the builders pay for their space.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Bryce. We'll open it up for public comment at 7:49 PM. Seeing no movement, we'll close public comment at 7:49. And I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 5.77.1 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Renee. Counsel, please vote. I always realize I pause when I say her name. Renee? Next item up is item 7C. This is ordinance number 3.01.118 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend chapter 13.02 of the Parker Municipal Code to add a definition for tourist home. Bryce?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The land development ordinance specifically does not allow tourist homes as home occupations within our residential areas. However, the LDO does not provide a definition for tourist home. The proposed amendment will add a definition of tourist home to section 13.02 of the ordinance. This amendment will provide clarification that short-term rentals, less than 30 days, are defined as tourist homes in the LDO and are not permitted in residentially zoned areas. It is important to note that zoning is a permissive tool, meaning that if a use is not listed, it is not permitted. Tourist homes are not listed as a use by right in any residential neighborhood and therefore would not be permitted within these districts. On October 10th, 2019, the Planning Commission voted six to one, recommending Town Council approve ordinance 3.01.118 to amend section 13.02 of the Parker Municipal Code defining tourist home. The one dissenting commissioner believed there should be a policy change that treated hosted tourist home differently. Staff recommends approval of this ordinance. As always, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bryce. Counsel, questions for Bryce?
So I just, I just have one.
Go ahead.
So Bryce, currently on Airbnb or VRBO, we have about 200 homes in Parker listed right now. So with this, with this action, those are now all illegal? As, I, as a homeowner, can't list my home on Airbnb, VRBO?
So it is actually currently not permitted by code. This simply clarifies the definition of tourist home. Tourist home wasn't permitted, but it wasn't defined.
Okay. So then, is this for enforcement purposes, that we're looking at this now?
So enforcement would be complaint-driven.
Okay. Other questions?
So just for clarification, right now, you cannot rent a home for less than 30 days in the town of Parker.
That's accurate.
And we are simply putting language in to define what a tourist home is instead of saying a home for less than 30 days rental.
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:52 PM. Scanning the crowd and seeing none, we will close public comment at 7:53. And I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 3.01.118.
On second reading.
On second reading.
We have a motion by Debbie and we have a second by Renee. Counsel, please vote. Next item on our agenda is item 7D. This is ordinance number 3.01.119 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend section 13.03.030 entitled Planning Department Adjustments of the Parker Municipal Code. Bryce?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Section 13.03.030 of the Land Development Ordinance currently allows for the Planning Department to make certain minor administrative adjustments to approved site plans and planned developments. Currently, changes to building elevations and materials are not permitted to be reviewed and approved through an adjustment process and therefore require a full site plan amendment process. The proposed LDO amendment would support existing businesses through allowing limited changes to building elevations such as colors, material changes, and additions of doors and windows to be approved quickly and administratively through the site plan adjustment process, rather than the lengthier and costlier site plan amendment process. All changes would still be required to be in compliance with the LDO and the town's design standards. On October 10th, 2019, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended Town Council approve ordinance 3.01.119 to amend section 13.03.030 of the Parker Municipal Code regarding Planning Department adjustments. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance as well. As always, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Bryce. Counsel, any questions for Bryce?
No.
Not seen any? Nope. Okay, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:55 PM. Seeing none? Close public comment at 7:55. Entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 3.01.119 on second reading. Second.
We have a motion by Renee and a second by Debbie. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes five to one with one no vote from Cheryl Pogue. Next item up is item 7E. This is ordinance number 3.351 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to add a new section, 13.07.170, entitled Associations to the Parker Municipal Code. Bryce, this will be your last one for tonight.
The grand finale for tonight, at least for me. The purpose of the proposed ordinance is to add a new section, section 13.07.170, entitled Associations to the Land Development Ordinance, that will require the formation of a residential or commercial properties owners association during the plating process to ensure enforcement of covenant restrictions, routine maintenance, and repairs to community-owned infrastructure and amenities. Currently, there are two residential communities in the town that lack a homeowners association, Cottonwood and Country Meadows. These communities demand a significantly higher amount of resources from our community services department than other neighborhoods with HOAs. Also, in neighborhoods with no HOA, residents of a subdivision are forced to be self-governing for enforcement of property maintenance and other items such as trash pickup. To date, the town has negotiated the establishment of HOAs through subdivision improvement agreements for both residential and commercial developments. Most developers have been cooperative in this process and see the benefits of an HOA for the... see the benefits of an HOA for the long-term success of the community. However, recently, a home builder with multiple projects in town has chosen not to create an HOA for one of their projects. This ordinance is intended to limit the proliferation of this issue going forward. On October 10th, 2019, the planning commission unanimously recommended town council approve ordinance 3.351, establishing section 13.07.170 of the Parker Municipal Code requiring associations. As always, I'm available for questions.
Counsel, last time he's up tonight, you got some questions for Bryce? Don't see any.
I do.
Okay, Renee?
So, if there's an area that currently doesn't have an HOA, will they be grandfathered in, or will they have to follow the sufficacies?
They will be grandfathered in.
And if somebody who's, like, in the process maybe, in the gray area, what happens with them?
So, so this will apply to new applications.
New applications, okay.
Other questions?
Yeah, Bryce, I think the biggest one for me, believe it or not, is garbage trucks and the wear and tear that that load does to our residential streets. In my neighborhood, the truck goes through, or one truck goes through at least once a week, and then every other week is two trucks. But when you have a neighborhood that has different garbage collectors coming in, you've got a truck every day from different collectors coming in because they don't use the same day. And that is five times, six times more traffic to have a tandem-wheeled load on those roads. And to help control those costs, and those costs to the rest of the citizens, I believe this is just one small thing that HOAs can do to ensure the quality of life we expect here.
Other questions? Thank you very much, Bryce. We'll open it up for public comment at 7:59. Kristin's the only one moving, and I don't think she wants to give public comment, so we're going to close public comment at 7:59, and I will entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 3.351 on second reading.
Second.
Motion from Debbie and a second from Renee. Counsel? Click those buttons. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda, item F. This is ordinance number 3.352. This is a bill for an emergency ordinance to impose a temporary suspension for 180 days in duration on the processing and approval of any application for a Town of Parker permit or license related to the development of property that are not included in a zoning district, and declaring the intention of the town council to consider the adoption of appropriate amendments to the land development ordinance with respect to such properties. Now, I know it says Jim Maloney on here, but Kristin, you're up front.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The purpose of this emergency ordinance is to temporarily suspend for 180 days the processing and approval of any application or permit related to development of properties that are not included in a zoning district within the town. This would be a temporary suspension. It would allow staff time to develop regulations and amendments to the land development ordinance to address properties that might not be within a zoning district in the town. Section 13.01.040 of the land development ordinance specifically provides that the land development ordinance applies to all properties within the town, and it says that all properties are to be placed into, into various zoning districts, including agricultural, multifamily, commercial, et cetera. And there are times, we've discovered that there could be instances where property, due to certain errors, it might be surveying defects, that they might not be included within a zoning district. And so we want time to be able to develop amendments to the land development ordinance to address those situations. Some of those defects might include if there was an issue with the notice and hearing procedures, surveying errors, as I mentioned earlier, if there was a court order that invalidated some of the town's zoning procedures, or, for example, if the zoning ordinance is unable to be passed because we couldn't get enough votes from council one way or the other to pass a zoning ordinance, we might end up with property that wasn't zoned. And we've been recently made aware of properties that are not included within a zoning district. There are significant impacts that might be felt for this, including land use and public welfare impacts, including the potential of applications being made for land uses that might be substantially incompatible with surrounding land uses. And so we would let, just like 180 days, to investigate what amendments need to be made to the land development ordinance to address this situation.
Kristin, thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions for Kristin? No? All right. We'll open it up for public comment at 8:03 PM if there's anyone wishing to address council. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:03, and I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve emergency ordinance number 3.352.
Second.
We have a motion by Josh and a second by Debbie. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. With no further business before council, we will adjourn at 8:03 PM.